Good evening, this is Tuesday, October 8th, 2024, Meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and that some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. That ugly band t-shirt you decided to wear tonight, or anything you intend to or not, screen share on your computer. Anything that you broadcast will be captured and recorded forever and ever. And will possibly wind up as a TikTok video to be shared amongst your friends and neighbors. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach.
Here.
Timothy McDonald.
Timothy Wheeler.
Sorry, Timothy Wheeler.
At least half of me is here, yes.
Carolyn McDonald.
And the other half of me, here.
Yeah, it doesn't matter how we divide it, it's still two people, so that's okay.
That's all I need is a call.
I'm here.
Thank you. With a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at 7:36 PM, Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. This is a meeting, open meeting of the Planning Board. Being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Mass. Due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. Specific information and general guidelines for the participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The Governor's Order suspends the requirement of an open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. And allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they concluded their remarks, I'll invite board members by name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights and/or motions. Please hold all your insights until your name is called. Board members, please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. And for any response, please wait until you yield the floor, state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in conversation with one another, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. Do we have any mail that we need to address at this point?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Oh, wait, one just came in, what is it, 8:37? Oh, AM. Uh, it's from Anna Crane, it says, would you mind reappointing me to Capital Planning Committee? We just had our first budgetary meeting last night and I was re-nominated as Chair, I guess it's important we make her a member, huh? So I guess I'd better get reinstated to the committee.
I'm happy to move that we appoint Anna Crane as a member of the Economic, I mean, the Capital Plan.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to reappoint Anna Crane. Is there any discussion?
She's doing a great job.
She is.
Absolutely.
Chairman.
Okay, seeing none, I will ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye, motion carries unanimous. Thank you.
I'll move the minutes from our last meeting if you want me to.
Yes, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes from our last meeting.
Uh, we do have a hand up in the audience from our town clerk.
One second.
Do you wanna vote first, do you wanna?
Well, first of all, I'll ask if there's any discussion about the motion to the minutes. Any corrections that need to be made? Can you elevate Eloise? So we can find out whether this. Good evening, Eloise.
Hmm, she's unmuted.
When will Anna Crane's position expire? You appointed her, but you also need an end. For my records.
When?
How long is the term?
Yeah, I don't know.
Until someone is reappointed.
No, it needs a date. 2005, 2006, surprise me.
You mean an end date in the, in the motion? Or?
No, but as part of her appointment, she needs an end date.
Well, give us some guidance, please. Do you have any sense as to how long her terms?
You can do it for two or three years.
It's what? It's been either two or three?
Yes.
Okay, well, let's appoint her for three.
Well, two plus three is five.
Modifying the motion.
Thank you.
I, I, I would second the motion, which I now understand to say appoint her for a period of three years. Uh, and may I suggest we add to that? Effective beginning the end of her current term, because I don't actually know when that ends.
That was a year and a half ago.
Happy with that.
That was a year and a half ago.
So she's halfway through the term that we're voting for now?
Are you serious?
Yes. As you see, this is why we need specific end dates.
Okay. Well, thank you, I'm glad we understood that, so, um, I would say effective from the date of appointment.
Yeah.
So until 2027?
Yep.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, does it, do we need to, is this an amendment to the motion that we accepted and approved? Or is this a completely new?
Well, let me, maybe I could just make one that I move that we appoint her. With effect from the date of this appointment for a period of three years. Okay?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote on this motion, an updated version. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye, motion carries unanimous. Now, we have another motion that's made and seconded. And there was no further discussion amongst board members. But I'll ask that question again, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to accept the minutes of the meeting from our last uh, meeting. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye, motion carries unanimous. Perfect. Is there any more housekeeping? Do we have any more bills or anything like that we need to pay?
Not this week.
Not at this point, good. And the, um, and our plan that we were floating around last time, floated around and signed?
Yeah, there was a minor glitch, but we took care of it today.
Thank you, Jay.
Okay.
Getting to the registry of deeds this afternoon.
Okay. As long as the proponent's happy.
He seemed to be.
Okay. Um, I had not reached out to adjust the invitation for, um, the diagnostics update. For eight o'clock, I don't know if anybody else did.
No, I, I said it at seven, we had, we had three different numbers, times floating around, so I made it 7:45.
And that's with Jane?
Jane, yes.
And she is here.
Yeah, and I had asked her in my email to her for eight o'clock, as well as the Select Board members.
And they are, they will.
But I think it must have been before.
Two of the three are here.
Okay, so we do have, we can.
Their notice at seven o'clock. We, we were 7:30, somehow eight o'clock get in there, and so I informed everybody it was 7:45, so.
Okay, you did inform everybody? Okay.
Okay.
So seeing how it's 7:45, we can take this up at this point.
And given that there are two meetings going on, I wonder if you should uh, make the selectmen panelists?
Yep. I'm doing that now. And then they need to open their meeting. And we'll elevate Kristen and Jane, get everybody in the pool.
Be good to go, Carolyn, can I open the meeting?
Yep.
Uh, so I'd like to open a joint meeting with the Berlin Select Board and the Berlin Planning Committee. Um, we have one additional member in attendance, so all those accepting our meeting, say aye. Chris, that's you, just, just, just say aye, and.
You have to unmute, unmute first. Say aye.
All right, um, so I'll call this meeting to order at 7:46. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for attending. Good evening, Jane, how are you?
I'm well, thank you for having me.
You're very welcome. So how would you, uh, your floor is yours, we're eager to listen to what you've come up with and, um, our discussion on our diagnostic and how it's going and what you've found so far.
Uh, I do have a draft report, um, I just sent it maybe an hour ago to Tom Sanford and Tim Wheeler. Um, my thought is that, um, if both the Select Board and the Planning Board want to maybe take a couple of weeks to review it. And get comments back to me, then I can finalize, uh, the report. I do have a, um, slideshow to share.
Okay.
It is just basically, um, an overview of the report. Okay, sorry, I did not have my own photo, so I took some from the Open Space and Recreation Plan, but we'll have to get our, our own, um, pictures, at least, at least they're CMR PC photos. Um, so we all know why we're completing a diagnostic, it's to identify inconsistencies, redundancies, ambiguities, or errors and omissions in the zoning bylaws. Um, it's also intended to modernize, um, the bylaws, to be clear, concise and easily readable. To identify any amendments that might need to be updated due to changes in mass general law. And then to identify any newer topics in land use planning, uh, for which new bylaws might be needed. So I also looked at some of the prior planning efforts, um, as each of these processes develop strategies to implement those plans, and some of those involve zoning. Uh, so I wanted to carry the comments from those into, uh, this report, uh, to be considered with the comprehensive zoning update. Uh, the main thing with the 495 Metro West Compact, um, was to focus development on priority development areas and preserve priority preservation areas. There is a table in the report, um, that you will see. Where, um, it had some goals of when certain projects within priority development areas might be developed. Um, and you know, some of those dates are 2018, so I'm just gonna need updated information on the status of those projects, um, so that I can update that information. I don't know if anything has changed since 2012, when, uh, this report was done. And if there are any other viable, potentially viable priority development areas that might need to be added. And if that means amending zoning, then that's something we can consider. Uh, there were many strategies in the Berlin Master Plan, uh, such as, uh, developing bylaws to restrict development on steep slopes. To revise the site plan requirements, to study accessory apartment issues, which I believe there'll be some discussion after this item. Uh, the possibility of converting one-family homes to two or three-family condominiums. Integrating historic resource protection, that could be in the form of, um, adopting a demolition delay bylaw. Um, and I know there've been efforts before to pass open space recreate, uh, open space residential development, um, that has not passed. Um, and so, uh, the recommendation was to engage in community outreach to try to garner more support for that. Uh, to discourage development in areas of high visual impact. To consider design guidelines for multifamily developments. And to evaluate land use regulations. I guess that was it. Uh, the Economic Development Plan. Uh, so the key strategies related to zoning include allowing for a farm compound to include a multi-unit residential complex. To establish design guidelines for multifamily developments. To develop more senior and entry-level housing. To streamline the regulatory process. And to reduce parking requirements. Uh, more recently, within the, uh, Berlin Strategic Plan. Strategies were to expand zoning to allow multifamily housing. To allow for reduced parking requirements. To reduce the dimensional requirements. And to prepare design guidelines and standards. Uh, the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan, uh, recommended developing a wetlands protection bylaw. And then in the Open Space and Recreation Plan, the recommendations were to discourage development in areas of high visual impact. To ensure development regulations create the least impact, such as with open space residential development and site plan review. To enact a stormwater bylaw. And to study the suitability of transfer of development rights. And I think Housing Production Plan may be the last one. Uh, with the recommendation to amend the inclusionary zone and bylaw to allow payments in lieu of building actual units. To consider cottage housing bylaw, which we have discussed before. And to prepare design guidelines for multifamily developments. Moving on to the actual zoning bylaws, the, the comments that are in the report are more general in nature. I am also including, um, a copy of the actual zoning bylaws that are marked up with more specific comments. Uh, which would have created way too much detail to add into the report, and then you'd be flipping back and forth between the report and the document, so I like to put the comments right in the zoning documents, so you're not searching for, uh, what we're referring to. So some of the key comments and recommendations are to combine the religious uses with other institutional and assembly uses, uh, there was a law passed in the early 2000s, Ralupa. Uh, that stated you can't treat, uh, religious uses differently than other uses, and so I know within the Building Code, um, churches are also considered just within the assembly uses, um, and Fire Code as well, so I, I think it's best to, uh, be more general with it and not to hold, uh, religious uses to a different standard. There have been a couple of updates to the marijuana laws in the last several years. Uh, including definitions, um, as well as some other references to the Cannabis Control Commission. And so that section would need to be updated. Um, prepare a bylaw to conform to Mass General Law's new allowance of buy right accessory dwelling units. Again, we'll be discussing that in a little while. To consider low-impact development and stormwater bylaws. To carefully explore the needed revisions to the signed bylaw to ensure that it is not regulating content. Um, you may be aware there was a Supreme Court case several years ago. Um, regarding, uh, church use that was held to a different standard than other uses, and, um, it went all the way to Supreme Court and communities across the country have been revising their sign bylaws just to make sure that it is content neutral. And not regulating the content of the sign. Uh, consider establishing regulations for warehouse and distribution centers. I know there are some in communities, I don't know, um, i-if there's a need for more of them in that general area, but it would be good to have some, uh, regulations established, just in case, uh, the town is approached with an application for one. Another newer topic is battery energy storage systems, uh, typically for solar, uh, they could be used for wind energy, I'm not sure, but um, many communities had a hard time getting their new, um, bylaws for this approved at the state level, uh, Pittsfield has finally gotten theirs approved, so theirs would be a good one to look at. Um, for anybody who's not familiar, this would involve several, um, like cargo containers filled with batteries to store the solar energy, uh, from the solar facilities, so that if there's an outage, then the energy can go back to temporarily, uh, power the area, uh, while the other systems are down. And to ensure that previously approved zoning amendments have been approved by the Attorney General's Office. I have every reason to believe they have been. Um, that's not the case in every community, and we're having to research decades of documentation to just to make sure that everything is up to date and approved, uh, by the AGO. So other considerations are, um, we've been in touch with, um, Department of Conservation and, um, Recreation. Conservation and Recreation, yeah. Um, and they have developed a state model floodplain bylaw that they are recommending communities, um, update their floodplain bylaws to the model. Uh, FEMA has also been doing a study on, um, the Nashua River watershed. And I know the far northwest corner of Berlin is in the Nashua River watershed. Um, the person I spoke to at DCR did state that there are no changes to the maps, um, for that section that's within the town. Um, but depending on the dates of your most, uh, current FEMA firm flood insurance rate maps, um, those probably need to be updated. Uh, we already talked a little bit about open space residential development, cottage housing. Um, and we talked about a year ago about short-term rentals, I don't know if that is something that is on the town's radar. But, um, while we are doing a comprehensive zoning update, um, these are all additional bylaws that we may want to, uh, develop to include with the update. And so, um, we're gonna have to look at a combination of all these strategies, amendments and new bylaws. Um, and that's what we're recommending to bring the, all the bylaws up to date. Um, consider the best practices to balance growth with open space protection. And to garner public support through information sessions, I am working with another community now, and we're having, um, multiple community sessions, info sessions, where we're making sure that the public knows, uh, what is in each of the proposed amendments. So that when they go to, um, public hearing or to town meeting, they're they have an understanding and they have opportunities in advance to ask any questions. And that is my presentation. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I'm encouraged, um, you know, I think this is really helpful from a high level, and then there's a number of specific issues, many of which we've been as you pointed out, and we've been chatting about, they've been on our radar, they're in some of these other um, reports. I know that when we were negotiating with the rep from the state or wherever in regard to the, the floodplain, the Nashua River issue. Um, she, she suggested that she could help us in, uh, in updating our bylaw too, which so what you're suggesting is certainly timely in that regard.
Yeah, the person in DCR, uh, Katie Pate is the person I was, uh, talking to. Uh, she's very happy to review any proposed changes to the bylaws and, and provide any feedback. Uh, just to make sure everything is in compliance with their latest data. And I noticed that some of those concerns have come up in multiple previous studies, so I think if you start hearing it a couple of times, then maybe it's something to pay attention to.
We're, we're at least consistent, right?
Yes.
So the, our EEA grant. Have you had any further sense as to when we might hear, is it later in October, early in November, or further out than that?
It's usually around then, I don't know if they will be delayed because they extended the application deadline. Um, I'm not sure what the reasoning was for that, but, um, that wouldn't surprise me if it's gonna take them just a little bit longer to um, get through all of the applications. Um, I think I've heard that some towns are getting notified on one stop, and their deadline was two weeks before EEA.
Okay.
But, uh, Kristen was the applicant, so she's the one who should be notified.
Nothing yet, but as soon as I hear, you will all be the first to hear.
Very good.
And I guess the other topic certainly that's been on our radar for quite some time and has you know, come to a higher priority again now is the, the, the overlay district language that we have for Solomon Pond Mall and um, the need to try to understand Marlborough's interpretation of the overlay and whether in their eyes it still exists. And if it doesn't, what the implications are for us in regard to how we live with that overlay. Um, so that would be, need to be incorporated into work that we do as we move forward with, um, you know, the, a possible rewrite of the zoning bylaw.
And I know there was some discussion about the potential for other uses there as well.
Yeah, and I think the Select Board, particularly right now, is interested in, um, the use chart, which I think is the simpler part of the equation, the the more problematic issues are, i-is there an overlay in the eyes of Marlborough? If there isn't an overlay anymore, as they've laid on top of the overlay their new zoning. Um, what does that mean for us, you know, that there's permissible building area, permissible parking areas, there's our you know, we have stormwater management on our site. You know, all the detention basins are basically in Berlin. You know, water, water and surge is being supplied by Marlborough, there are separate entities that own property there, other than just Solomon Pond Mall Inc. or whatever, and um, so it'll take some time to sort of unravel a lot of those mysteries, and then um, that would need to be included in this zoning update as well.
And there is some mention of it in the, the finer details in the report and the, um, the marked up version of the bylaws themselves. And I, I actually questioned, um, in the bylaws where it mentions, um, what some of the requirements are in Berlin, and then it says that that applies in Marlborough also, and I'm like, do Marlborough agree to that?
Well, I kind of feel the same way about their changing, any changes to the overlay. Can they just decide that it doesn't exist?
But they're not, it's just they're changing, the overlay is there. There's an underlying zoning, and by changing the underlying zoning to let everything from nuclear reactors to, uh, community gardens, um, then there, there, the overlay is still there, it seems to me, but it's completely undercut by the uses of the, with respect to the underlying zoning, and I think the question we want to confirm is in the event of a conflict, uh, is there any argument for saying that it has to be, if you vote consistent with both, but it's? it has to be, if you vote consistent with both, but it's it's a really complicated uh issue.
Yeah. So I mean, that's you know, a a problem that's gonna take a while for us to address, obviously.
And you get the sense that Marlborough feels that the overlay district that we've had for twenty-five years or plus plus um is no longer valid?
The thing that worried me in the conversations that we had when Kristen and I met with Matt Bader, who's no longer a a consultant, I mean, they're they keep changing horses with their consulting groups. Um, but Matt brought in a lawyer and and in in response to our questions about the need to be um compliant on both sides of the line with what would we agreed to, that there'd be some mutual agreement. Um. It it almost seemed to me as though he suggested that Marlborough had never signed or recorded any document that suggested there was a mutual agreement on the overlay. Um, which w- we haven't pursued uh with our council, but I think at some point we're gonna have to evaluate that and try to determine whether I mean, there's mutual aid agreements between the towns that cross county lines and town lines, there's w- water supply and surge supply. I mean, there's a whole
Oh, yeah.
So it's it's a if if Marlborough were to argue that there they had never recorded it, for instance, and that they simply want to paste over the the overlay on their side with this new zoning. Um. It it would unravel a number of things that would have to be addressed.
Yeah, and again, I think the method by which it seems to me they're doing it is by amending the underlying zoning. And then making the argument that any use can can form to the underlying zoning. And it's only if they want to take advantage of the overlay district aspects that that would apply. I think that's probably where they're going. Um. Anyway. We're we're going down a rabbit hole here a little bit, I guess.
Kristen has her hand up.
Uh, through the chair, if I may?
Sure, please.
Thank you. Um, I'm I'm clearly, oh, let me put my hand down. Okay. Not a zoning expert by any means, but I was trying to understand sort of the genesis of the overlay district and how it came to be. I'm not overly familiar with overlay districts that cross over two jurisdictions or two two municipalities, if you will, and I got the impression and Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, from that meeting that some of that institutional knowledge on Marlborough's side perhaps had been lost, and so there was confusion about what they could change and couldn't change, but ultimately I was trying to understand how it came to be, but also how they could sort of tell us what to do or we could tell them what to do being separate jurisdictions. So I didn't know if someone could fill me in a bit.
May I, Tim, cuz
Yeah.
And then you can you can chip in if you think I'm talking rubbish at any point. Um. My and and I was uh the point person for the planning board on the rezoning and the negotiations for the mall. And my understanding of it was that we worked together to coordinate the terms of an overlay district. But that each town independently through its obviously, you know, quite divergent uh structure, approve that.
Hmm.
And that's it, plain and simple. Uh, you know, there was no intermunicipal agreement. I I, you know, um, there was there was the example of what we were doing, which was working together, and I think there was the tacit understanding that, you know, this is a, this is a big thing and we have to work together if it uh evolves in the future, but you know, there was no municipal agreement that I can remember.
On only in regard to public safety?
Right, no, you're totally right. And and that's a good point is that uh you know, it, but I I think um I think that uh if Marlborough had something that they wanted to do and wanted to release us from that, they probably would, you know, but so but like it's a point we, you know, obviously it it shows that the whole project is uh more intertwined and should probably stay intertwined in in order to preserve value for the two towns. And frankly, I think for the owners in if 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 we work together, I mean, I I always believe if you zone it, they will come. And if we try to zone it in a way that is um more focused on trying to attract things that will use the pads, which are now disused, but perhaps support that core that's still there and you know, the divergent businesses and restaurants that are there, so. Yeah, I I think it's I think it's that the towns have to work together. We we shouldn't get our ourselves in a twist about what we uh agreed to that nobody can freaking remember thirty years ago that uh, you know, that I think that's how we really have to proceed.
Yeah, uh my recollection too is that a good part of the the overlay district language. You know, when you and I and Rick and Joel Bard met with Bill McCabe and and all and their lawyers in Boston those different times, it was you know, there I can't remember people from Marlborough being in attendance. And that it seemed as though we drove the language that ultimately got voted on.
We definitely did. Um. But I think Marlborough looked at it. We did. We did the work at the developer's expense, that's fine. Um. We did the work, but then Marlborough separately through their procedures accepted that.
Yeah.
Um. And I'm not aware that they made any material tweaks to it.
No, I agree. So anyway, that's it all that also needs to be part of this big ov- overhaul, um, because it's integral, certainly.
And
And
you know, can is um Marlborough within CME CMPCs? No, it isn't. Okay.
Metropolitan Area Planning Commission.
Um. Because where where I was going with that and it's not something we can answer tonight, I'm sure, but um if the two towns enter into, you know, more active engagement on this, is there a way to coordinate and support that through li- as luck would have it, divergent uh regional planning commissions?
I would think there's a way uh we can do that. I know that uh several communities on the western side of the MAPC area wish they were in our district cuz uh apparently communities closer to Boston get more attention.
Oh.
I'm sure that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah.
File that under duh.
No, we, I mean, y- you're right, we have had um requests from towns just over the line that have asked the commission to to support some of their initiatives and we've been delicate about how we've responded to that, certainly. There is the four ninety-five uh
Oh.
Compact.
Partnership.
Yeah.
And and that it it might very well be CMRPC working with the compact um to to try to, cuz you you've worked with them recently on some projects and it seems as though they might very well be able to bring us to the table if there ends up being some um problems in the discussion.
Yeah, I mean, my experience is if you go into a suggestion for an approach and if you agree to do some substantial portion of the work to investigate it, um, you're gonna be more successful than if you just say, I have this great idea and go over to Marlborough. So, you know, it would be, I think, um maybe we should keep in mind having some CRPC support in, you know, the discontinuing approach between towns. It's very dynamic and I think it's an interesting situation.
Yeah, I know, Thomas, you went to the city council meeting um in hopes of listening in on their conversation about the the vote to resume um. Maybe you want to relay that story?
Well. Sure, um. I had a significant uh medical issue over the last year, so I walk with a cane and I'm rather slow right now and I aimed to get there about fifteen minutes into their meeting because it was like this fifth thing on the agenda and parked near the front door. Went up and it was locked, so I had to wind my way through and go upstairs. I got there at like hmm probably seven twenty-two and this was the third or fourth thing on the agenda. And it had already been covered. Which
Shows how much conversation actually happened about it.
Ex- exactly, exactly. Um. But I think that also emphasizes the need for us to be uh proactive in terms of uh of kickstarting this, you know, I mean, Ma- Marlborough is much bigger than, you know, the people who are running it have many more things to think about in some respects than uh those of us on the call. And I think that uh was exhibited back thirty years ago when we did the work to put together the overlay and then they probably considered it um appropriately, but as part of a general agenda.
Hmm.
I also think because it's more impactful for Berlin that maybe we care a little bit more. Uh, that we're a little more particular about what it allows and doesn't allow.
It's it's bigger for us, yes, absolutely. I think we've probably digressed and need to get back on the agenda, sorry.
It's all zoning related.
So in in the I guess you've done these for a couple of communities.
Mm-hmm.
Um, wh- what have been the 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 logical steps that you've taken as you've you know, finished this first stage? What what have what have you done in those other communities that you found successful?
Uh, some communities um will do the diagnostic first, others will incorporate it with the zoning update, so it's one continuous process. At this point, we have to wait to hear from EEA about whether the funding is gonna be granted or not. And and if so, then we can uh move forward with uh setting a kickoff meeting, um determining what direction the town wants to go in on some of the recommendations. Um, you don't have to take my recommendations on all of them. I would say the ones that are legal issues, I would probably uh want to um amend those bylaws. Uh, but other things, you know, speaking of Solomon Pond, this um the highway, the HSEO and the RSEO districts. So much of the language between those two is redundant. So I, you know, I was thinking one of my recommendations is, you know, are there ways that we can streamline the process or the the documents, so we're not repeating so much of the same stuff. And so there's a couple of of recommendations in the report that are related to that. But you know, that might be something where the town says, no, we like it the way it is, and that's fine. It's just a personal recommendation.
We we did take that peculiar approach to these projects. I think we've we've always felt that um the citizenry really needed an opportunity to participate in these big, big, big projects, so River Bridge, Solomon Pond, Highland Commons, those three. Um, we always said to the developers and the proponents that it we felt it was important to to be very explicit about what it was they thought they wanted to do. And that then we would take that proposal understanding that there'd be modifications, but that, you know, we wanted to tie them down pretty specifically if we could. And take that to town meeting and let the the voters approve it or disapprove it and um, you know, we've been around now on these for thirty years, we've had there was a pyramid project on sixty-two at the Highland Commons site that was turned down by town meeting. There was um s- several attempts. I mean, the first attempt for Highland Commons failed, the first attempt for River Bridge failed. There was a proposal before River Bridge that failed, so those all went to town meeting with with overlay proposals. And and they've each had their own peculiar little approaches to, you know, what they wanted to allow and how they wanted to be developed, so. Um. It it it's worth discussing, but I mean, that's the rationale behind how we came to use these overlay districts for these big, big, big projects.
I understand. Thank you for explaining that.
So I, yeah, I so we we wouldn't want to take a generic highway shopping center bylaw necessarily and and have it utilized in a multiple sites. It it really became specific to the area. You know, I guess.
Yeah, that's understandable.
Yeah, that's then, and that's why we always took the overlay approach.
Well, also, it was understandable by the citizenry. They had been through that process multiple times and they felt comfortable with it and, you know, it was transparent and there wasn't a lot of um you know, people thinking in conspiracy theories and what have you um that people were trying to get agendas hidden or veiled past uh by people.
Right, by making it more generic.
Yeah, no, that's right. And I think, yes, you're absolutely right because it uh it obviated the argument said, well, what happens if you apply these rules to somewhere else? Which is always something people discuss.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, that's just an example of some of the comments that are in there, but um, it is kind of lengthy, so however much time um both of these bodies need to review it um and present any more comments to me, um, I'd be glad to come back in four to eight weeks, whatever amount of time that you need to review it and get comments back to me.
So, I mean, that works well with the expected timetable from EEA probably in regard to whether we'd have funds to go whole hog into a a rewrite. If we fail to get the EEA grant. Um. It, I think it would be helpful for us to determine that there might be some issues that you've outlined that we could try to proceed with and um, the the planning board did earmark money for the EEA grant, which I assume we'd still be willing to expend. Um, and certainly the Solomon Pond Mall issue needs to be dealt with, the ADU issue needs to be dealt with because of the state's changes. Um, and then there are a couple probably other high-profile issues that, you know, you could help us identify and that maybe within the confines of the funds that we'd have available, we might very well be able to say, okay, we'll we'll work with the commission, we'll we'll work on a rewrite of these particular portions of the bylaw and um, if we don't get the EEA grant, we'll at least find ourselves in a better position at Maytown meeting um than we are today, so. I mean, that's a suggestion I'd make anyway.
And and I don't want to get your hopes up, but I know in speaking with some of my colleagues that um there's been a very high success rate with EEA and as opposed to one stop, which is so much more competitive. And the reason we've been asking communities to self-submit is because we feel like if we're submitting so many applications on behalf of multiple towns, then it's like we're competing against ourselves and that the town submitting on their own will give them a better chance of getting it, so I'll I'll be surprised if you don't get it.
Let's hope you're not surprised.
Oh, good, good.
So given that, um, do you think that there's enough, if we wait the four to six weeks or so, is there enough time to get all this accomplished? Have all of the public input and be avail ready for a a May Town Meeting?
No.
Well, it's funny.
May, May what year?
One year?
Twenty-six?
Okay.
Okay. Twenty-six, maybe.
Can I can I refine that question and say, are are there things that you might recommend that we should put on, you know, looking at what what is it, end of January to finalize the?
A lot of a lot of communities are trying to get the ADU bylaw done. It goes into effect February. There are actually two sections of the Affordable Housing Act that are related to ADUs. Section seven has the definition in it and it's already in effect. Section eight has all other regulations about the the size and what towns can and can't regulate in it. That part, there was a six-month waiting period before it goes into effect, so February second. I would say if there are like other new bylaws that you think are really urgent, like ADU, you could shoot for doing two or three of those for spring.
Yeah, yeah. And I think what what I was asking was whether you, in the list of things that you've looked at, had any recommendations for two or three that even without looking at our bylaw, you think we should look at before the end of January. You you with me?
I can take another look to see what other ones would be the most priority. I know we're working with another town now and they wanted to hurry up and get like ADU common driveway and flag lot bylaws.
ADU is clearly on our radar screen and we feel we need to have something on the annual town meeting for that. And we're going to talk about that. If, you know. Aren't we?
It is on the agenda, I believe.
Some communities don't like to put zoning on the the annual town meeting just because there's so many other items on it.
Oh, we we've been there, done that.
But it might also be good to to break it up, you know, with some on the annual and some on a fall meeting or the following year. But.
I hear what you're saying is that we could do that without compromising the local situation? Moving it beyond. Okay. Yeah, that's good to know.
It also gives us an opportunity at town meeting to let people know that we are working on overhauling all of the zoning bylaws. And that if there are people that are interested in that process, they can pay more attention.
And when it comes time to actually do the update, one of the comments in the the report has to do with community outreach and whether or not you should do a survey, but I know there have been several other projects in the last few years and sometimes people just get really burnt out by surveys. So I didn't know with like the housing plan or the village strategic plan whether there's enough information, feedback from those projects that will help with the zoning, but I those are those are things I'd have to look into.
I I don't think, I, in terms of the ADU or anything that is imminent, I don't think there's anything in those plans that that would affect it and yeah, so I I don't think you need to review those in looking at your answer. I I others may disagree, but I think we're asking for something at the more structural level.
All right, and we don't have to wait four to eight weeks for me to come back, but it's just whatever timeframe you need to review the documents and ready to get comments back to me. I can be flexible with that.
Well, I'm excited. I think this is great and I appreciate what you've done so far. I think you're you're gonna, this is gonna be a big, big, big help to us.
Very good. Thank you.
So the information that you sent Tim and myself, it just basically is a more, has more meat on it than what you presented on your slideshow?
Yeah, the slideshow was a more abbreviated version. It just gets hard to read if there's too much text in the slide.
Yep.
And then, as I mentioned, the report, it is a draft. Open to any comments you have and making any amendments to it. I am looking for updates on the priority development areas and what the status of those different sites are. And so that information can be updated. And then for really detailed comments, it's right in the heart of the zoning bylaw document that I added comments to.
Okay.
So you guys will share that?
Yes.
Tom will share his. Tim's keeping his to himself.
I'll be willing to share it.
Thank you.
Okay.
He wants to eliminate our ice houses and fur farms.
Wants to what?
She wants to eliminate our zoning of ice houses and fur farms.
Oh, and fur farms?
That's not exactly accurate. I was asking if they're still relevant.
Well, we did. I moved into Berlin in eighty-two and we did still have a fur farm actually in Berlin at that point, but not for very long thereafter.
The remnants are still in the woods.
Yes, I was just gonna say, we get a lot of weasels in the woods because of that.
Well, the remnants of the cages, actually.
Yeah.
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 That was synthetic fur.
Yeah.
I actually had to visit there in some capacity many years ago for the town and yeah, there were not virtual fur farms.
Okay. We'll look into that.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right.
Stand by for the next discussion.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I don't think deleting fur farms is going to be too difficult, I mean, for, we gotta blend in with some of these things anyway.
So we we actually, we we're way beyond our time, but we'll, we should pick up the ADU mandate next because that was next part of our agenda. So we're, there is a table that Jay created, right?
I have a table I made. How many of us attended the cottage housing webinar today?
I mean, the one that was in the middle of the day?
Yeah, that one that I didn't attend.
Yeah, that one that I was at work for.
Yeah.
Yeah, so was I, so I didn't get the, I only got the middle part of it, but the middle part was pretty good.
I enjoyed it. It was, and and Jane may want to comment on this, but I mean, I, they had over a hundred participants.
Wow.
And the three speakers I thought were quite helpful. I particularly enjoyed was it Sue, the engineer, who was the engineer?
Sue Carter.
She she displayed a number of charts that helped you understand the difficulties that communities have when you begin to try to apply water and surge use and and try to stay under certain parameters that the state would establish in terms of gallons per day and but I I came away hopeful in that discussion, which didn't have to do with ADUs. I mean, it it was helpful in that the the developer I think really demonstrated that in in Lancaster and Stowe and a number of Tam Bolton, you know, there's a number of of small cottage housing projects that he's completed in the area that in some cases have the ability to utilize town water and surge, but in other cases clearly didn't and had to deal with that entirely on their own. And if the town was able to help with the availability of the land or, you know, other other issues, it really enhanced the project and he I thought, okay, this is good. This this is promising big time. So I was pleased that the commission, you know, pulled those folks together.
Jane, is, are any of those daytime meetings available in any form for those of us?
We we don't have it recorded. We can send you slideshows and there were questions that people sent in with their registration that we ran so over on the meeting that we didn't have time to go through all of them, but we told people we will send those written in comment questions and answers back to them.
That would be great if we could get the slideshow and and anything else.
Sure, we can send it along.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Thank you.
I have some screenshots of some of the more interesting parts of it. I agree. What, when you're talking about Tim, I thought automatically the the limit for number of units in a development without an expensive septic and public water supply was sixty-six units, but it's not like it's more like eight.
Yeah.
There's one development where it was what was it, thirty-two units or something, but they were in groups of eight, four groups of eight. So they they had private, each group of eight had its own well and septic system that was pretty conventional as opposed to having a million dollar system at the river bridge. That's pretty interesting. Anyways, would you like to look at the chart?
Yes, please.
On pins and needles.
Let's see, screen two. Can you see it?
Yeah, well, what, all right.
Can you read it or is it too small?
Yeah.
Walk us through it.
Yeah.
What the heck am I looking at?
Uh, so what I did is I went through what I know of the ADU, there's there's not a lot to find about what's going to be allowed for ADUs or what's what has to be by right. Got that in this column B here, and then I went through our bylaw and looked for same and different. And then there's a column for undefined here. And in our bylaw, we have two accessory apartment definite, whatever regulation. So one is for an apartment inside an existing single-family home. This doesn't have to be existing, it could be new construction. And then the other one was a detached structure. And then way down the bottom, I've got some other issues with the building sanitary codes. So the biggest difference obviously is that the ADU mandate, ADU mandate says you can't discriminate against anyone for occupying an ADU and ours says it has to be one person in the group living there has to be related by blood or marriage. If it's in an in a building with the primary structure. And if it's detached, it's different. You can have up to four people, including one related by blood or marriage or a caregiver or a big A affordable unit. So they're different. But neither one of them is consistent with the new mandate. The next one is the number of occupants. So it doesn't say this in the new ADU mandate, but the code is one hundred and fifty square feet per first person and a hundred square feet for each additional person. And the bedrooms have to be a minimum of fifty square feet per person. And we have two different numbers. One is three and one is four occupants in ours. So that's different. Our law says that the owner of the primary unit has to have been there for five years and continue to be living there in order for the ADU to be occupied. There's nothing about that in the state mandate. We say you can have modest building modifications that can be essentially removed, so it could be returned to being a being a single-family home. That's unique to us. The maximum size state says fifty percent of the primary residence square footage up to nine hundred square feet. So if you're the primaries above eighteen hundred square feet, you're stuck at nine hundred with the ADU. And we say, if you do the math, it's fifty-three percent of the existing house, including the addition. Right? So if there's
So if it's two thousand, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, if it's two thousand square feet and you add another thousand for the for the apartment, you're kind of right at the, well, you can go to fifteen hundred for the addition. I think the math is actually written in a different way. And a question that actually, I was talking to Richard Hanks about this because the building commissioners are all talking about this. One of the questions they come up with for the cities and towns is, are you going to allow more than nine hundred square feet with a special permit?
Does the law say that we have to?
Not yet. I'm kind of wondering what more meat there's going to be on that. Between now and, you know, in the six months between now and February second, are we going to?
And and that's a big, that's a big question because if more than nine hundred square feet requires a special permit, then it is actually not a use of right. So it's interesting. That'll be.
Right, so nine hundred square feet is by right.
Right, exactly, right. Not, no pun intended, yes.
So we would be extending you know, the ADU, state ADU mandate by allowing ones larger than nine hundred square feet. So it wouldn't, I don't, we would be inconsistent with the state. It's a question whether we want to do it or not. We also have a requirement that the apartment or freestanding building look like a single-family home. I don't know, I guess that doesn't apply to the detached. It's only the if you add an an addition to your current home for an apartment, it needs to still look like a single-family home. I don't think it says in the state document whether you can have more than one per lot. I'm just kind of assuming it's only one. We do say one per lot and one question we should ask ourselves is, would we want to allow more than one per lot?
Everything I've understood is is one per lot on the on the state side is.
If it actually says that.
I don't know. Is Jane still there?
Yes, I am. I wasn't sure if you were talking to me. My understanding is that if you go over nine hundred square feet or you want more than one ADU, it's a special permit. But the towns do not have to allow that.
Okay.
Right.
They only have to allow up to nine hundred.
Right.
So we would have to decide whether we want more than one, right?
Mm-hmm. Well, yeah, yep.
Right, and then we require fairly recently, which I think we changed this bylaw that we require a special permit that has to be renewed every five years. And there's kind of no guarantee you're going to get the permit after five years, which is kind of a disincentive for, you know, spending money.
Which wouldn't wouldn't apply if we amend the bylaw consistent with state law that this is a use of right.
Exactly.
Yeah.
The building inspectors were asking whether we're going to require site plan approval for the construction. Right? So I don't know that it's clear that the state would not allow us to require that.
I think that's a, that's a good, that's a confirmed question because it's foundational. Yeah, I think technically site plan approval does not, is consistent with the use of right, but it's a good question to ask.
Yep.
According to the sessions I went to with state, you can ask for a site plan review. They did not seem to be recommending it so much, just I think they don't want the appearance that you're trying to make it too difficult for an ADU to get approved.
Right.
But towns can ask for site plan review.
Thank you. That's perfect.
We'll probably have to kind of watch how that goes over the next few months. So I would think we.
Yeah. I I think with all the other things on the I I think with all the other things on the. On the list, it's. Not perhaps a hill I'd want to die on. There are other things that. I'm more interested in, yeah.
Um, we require that at the termination of the use of the apartment that. The home has to go back to a single family home. Right, and that includes if you sell it. So you wouldn't be able to sell it. With the improvements that you made.
Mm hmm. That's a really good point.
Yeah. Everyone's assuming that um. The Board of Health is. Going to play by the same rules that they play by today. That there wouldn't really be any change with water and sewer. Setbacks for them. Um, but I don't think it's specifically stated, maybe it is stated in what we've got so far. We've only got a paragraph, I think, for the state.
The state says, uh, the law says the municipalities can impose reasonable restrictions. Such as setbacks, height limits, um, and then of course, yes, water well and septic requirements would still. Um, apply. And fire code, building code.
Right. Okay, so going to the detached structures, as I mentioned, we say for people with. Blood or marriage caregiver affordable. Um. If. The. Freestanding unit was in existence. On January first nineteen ninety and not modified, then these restrictions on occupancy don't apply. So it's basically an apartment that you can rent to anybody. Um, we have an appearance that has to look like the principal residence or a barn or garage. It's kind of not too specific. Um. What else here? So, uh, one other issue is presumably. Many of the, many of these freestanding units are going to be served by the same driveway as the principal residence. So I was looking at our, at our bylaw for common driveways. If that, you know, if that becomes a common driveway because it's got two living units. On it. Um, the common driveway bylaw says that the. Single driveway must be better than one. Um. I don't know how much detail is there about what better means. It has to serve a minimum of three lots. It has to be fifty feet wide at the entrance, which is pretty big. And you've got bonding and a special permit and all sorts of things.
So. So I mean, the difference is that we're talking about two dwelling units on one lot. And the common driveway is utilized to serve. Multiple lots, so. It it wouldn't necessarily follow that. That. Two units on one lot served by. A driveway would have to comply with the common driveway section of our bylaw.
No, I would, I I'd agree, but I think it's a good. And I appreciate the the thoroughness of the issues. You know, I think that's one piece of spaghetti that won't stick to the wall, but I agree.
Yeah.
Both of it's on the list, and I agree with that Tim said about it.
Okay. Um, and one other thing that Richard was talking about is that. If you say you have a second unit, you say this apartment. In the same building. As the primary residence in. The building inspectors believe or or want to know whether that quality, whether that has to be. Treated like a two family. Because if it's got two families that are unrelated. Today with the building code, um, you have to have the fire separation, so you've got to have one hour, you know, fire rated sheetrock.
Yeah.
Is that mass building code?
Yeah. I I would say this one, and again, I appreciate the thoroughness, but I think this one probably doesn't belong on. Our list, it raises. Different issues, but apart from the.
Yeah.
Major ADU things, but it does.
Yeah.
It does indicate a latency in. Our bylaws.
Mm hmm. Right. That's what I got so far, but what I was trying to do is is um. Find all the questions that we should be answering. Before we um. Get our bylaw put together.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is great.
It's fantastic. Uh, let me, let me say, I had been approaching it from a different direction. Which was basically to look at the existing bylaw with the state bylaw, you know, in front of me. And doing a marked copy of edits. Of the selected sections that. I thought, because as I'd said at an earlier meeting, I would take on that. That responsibility, but I would say that. Looking at this, and I only had a chance to look at it over the last day or so, um. Jay, the what you have pointed out is entirely consistent with the work that I've been doing on. Fiddling with the actual language of bylaw, so thank you, and a lot of other interesting issues that. Will help in finalizing that.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we. Kind of get all the questions on the table and answer them, then from that, we can probably.
Yeah.
Bylaw.
Yep.
Because you'd have all the answers.
Yeah, yep. And again, some of these things won't be reflected in the final bylaw, but they're things that we have to think about in the background or. We have to put in the parking lot for, you know, a a different action, but I I thought it was great.
Right, thank you. So. One thing I would. Like to accomplish at this meeting or talk about, maybe accomplish later. Is to is to get on the same page about what our goal. Is. For the bylaw that we put in front of voters in May. Right?
I think the goal is to be compliant with the state.
Well, we have to.
Right. I didn't, I didn't really see me, you know, like that 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 felt a little obvious, but.
But but think about other goals, so um. We we started talking at last meeting about trying to get affordable housing from this, whether it's. You know. Capital A affordable housing with the lotteries and all that, or is it some form of rent control so that we can? Force the ADUs to be less expensive. To rent. Um, so that's, that's like a goal. Is that one of our goals?
Yeah, can I suggest one thing and and apologies? I'm I'm going to have a hard stop at nine o'clock. Um, because I have to be in Boston at. Four to seven in the morning, and I can't leave the office until six in the evening. Um. Maybe we want to defer goals because I agree it's an important issue to lessen the last five minutes of the meeting. And otherwise, I'm happy, I'm happy to listen and drop off too.
What the question is, because I kind of like to end the nine two. Um. As I thought about it, I I think. One of our goals, obviously, is what you just said, Carolyn, but I think another goal that's really important is to get. Uh. A bylaw approved by the voters. Right, so I think as we answer these questions. And there are going to be other ones, and and we're going to, we're going to have. Things that we would like to, let me see, we would like to put on the ADUs. To make them compatible with our town. Um. But I think we have to constantly be thinking of a very high priority that we want the voters to vote for it, because otherwise we're going to go for a year. In the kind of forty B situation where we have no control beyond what the state. Mandates. Right, it's like our wetlands bylaw, you know.
Yeah.
We have, we have a bylaw in place, right? So it's going to, it. The state puts this out. In the wild, right, and it's incomplete. And it doesn't match up to what. We have, but we still have a bylaw. It's still been approved by the AG's office, so it's not, doesn't get thrown out, right? And replaced by the state. So if anybody approaches us, I mean, we still have guardrails. For however long it takes us to arm wrestle something that. Can be voted in by the citizenry as dovetails with the state and everything else. If if everything goes out the window or in a town meeting, annual town meeting. And it doesn't.
Think about that.
I mean. My 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 sense is. That what we want to do. Is to do the minimum. To assure that we are efficiently. Um. Coordinated with the state law, and that's what we should do in May. Um. We may. To, and again, this is just me speaking, um, we may want to say that we want to take these ADUs. And um. You know, try to impose other limitations on them, but. We could talk about that then, and you know, I mean, I my feeling is. The task before us immediately. Is just to bring the zoning bylaw in compliance. As we go forward and maybe before we. Suggest that, uh. We can suggest amendments that. Might forward things we're interested in, but I I don't think we're necessarily prepared to do the. That in the next, you know, like four or five minutes.
Right, yeah, let me just, let me just ask Jane while she's here. Jane, can you speak to how allowing these additional units? How that affects our overall housing numbers in relation to forty B?
Uh, actually, these ADUs cannot be deed restricted as affordable units. Uh, the state.
As units, as housing.
No, our question is, yeah. E- exactly, the.
They count as housing, I believe so, yeah.
Oh. If fifty percent of the, if fifty percent of the town, all of a sudden put in an ADU. So now we've got fifty percent more dwelling units in our town. So that is going to skew our percentage of, but but none of them can be deed restricted. So now we're underwater. Again.
Yeah. I don't think that question has been necessarily. Wrestled with, but that's a huge.
Because, right, because that's our.
Towns and us, yeah.
Right.
You know, my perception is that. Because of the fact that the Board of Health still has. A significant amount of power in this process. That. The likelihood of our seeing a substantial number of ADUs in people's backyards. Given the fact that their, the upgrades to their septic systems are probably going to be fairly substantial. Um. I I just don't see us threatened by a. An onslaught of ADUs.
Yeah, the fifty percent was 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 definitely an exaggeration, but.
Right, but you're right in that. You know, our our subsidized housing inventory is is delicate. I mean, we're at sixteen percent or whatever, but. When you look at actual numbers. Of affordable units. You know, we're we're not much over ten percent, and it's the bonus that we get from apartments. Um, that's benefited us that. I I wonder, though, if we can work with the Community Preservation Act, supporting the Housing Trust. And and try to incentivize through some, you know, rental support. Um, that might very well make it possible for some of these ADUs. For homeowner to feel comfortable with. Um, putting it out into the, you know, the subsidized housing inventory process so that a a couple of these we might capture as affordable at some point. With some support from the Housing Trust, so. I mean, there's, there's a bunch of things we can explore, I think.
But I think much more important for us. Is. And I'm not sure this question is answered anywhere because I was Googling it. Um. Do these units? Count? In the denominator of the fraction? Because every time they counted, the denominator and the fraction, I mean. To me, it's almost immaterial whether some of them add to the numerator. It's, that's like, that's a key question.
Yeah. And that's what I was asking.
Yeah, that, no, that's what I was following on, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh. Does CMR PC have any insight into that?
I'm I'm taking notes for our next meeting with state, so. We can get some clarity on that.
Right, because that's a, that's a huge issue for towns. That especially ones that have not. You know, reached their ten percent, that's just going to push them all the way back down again.
Yeah.
Especially towns that have water and sewer. You know, because they're they're much more in likely to see a greater impact.
But it's 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 a huge latency in this whole thing. Uh, you know, in terms of. The the Commonwealth. Coordinating. Two trains that are on separate tracks.
Right, their requirements of one and their requirements of.
Yeah, 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 um.
Are in conflict.
And, you know, I think I speak for the planning board, and I I think I would speak for the town in saying. This is all well and good. But please, please, don't count these. As part of. The denominator of the transact of 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 the fraction, you know?
So, Jane, in the MBTA communities, there there wasn't a requirement that, was there a requirement that a percentage be affordable, or could towns include? Those projects is affordable or required?
So if towns have inclusionary zoning that um. Is more stringent than twenty percent affordable units at eighty percent of the area median income. Then they had to do an economic feasibility analysis that they refer to as an EFA. To prove that the project could still be viable. So if they wanted to bring it down to, you know, sixty percent AMI or or less. Or um, require twenty five or thirty percent of the units be affordable. Then they would have to prove that the project could actually work.
Okay.
But it doesn't require affordable. They're they're just trying to get units built.
But they, but they did. But on that level, they they did allow through the MBTA process, the the notion that you could. Have some affordable units created as part of the way in which the town would structure its bylaw.
Yes, up to twenty percent at eighty percent AMI.
Fortunate that they, you know, that they sort of just bypassed that, um. When they dealt with this ADU issue.
One last thing to consider about um, the ADUs, some communities are wanting um, to restrict that. They cannot be built for the purpose of becoming a short term rental.
Mm hmm.
Because that defeats.
So an anti Airbnb.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's a good one. I love it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Eloise.
You're a bunch of mice and a pumpkin. They're they're. Bunch of mice and a pumpkin outside my front door, so I think I have to leave.
A hundred years ago, when I talked with HUD, they said. If you just had an affordable, you might have an affordable. Rental in your town, but if it's not subject to the lottery, you could not add it to your ten percent.
Right, we talked about that at our last meeting too.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's the, and I think that's where the potential. To look at some support from the Housing Trust. I mean, I, it it may may not, there may not be any way forward on that, but it still seems as though. Some sort of subsidy. That um, gave a homeowner, uh, you know, an incentive to be included in the lottery and, you know, make that apartment. Um, compliant with some of the subsidized housing inventory requirements. Would be worthwhile investigating anyway, so.
I think the restriction on short, short term rentals was actually mentioned in the document, in the bond.
Yep, and we've certainly talked about it. It came up last year. When I went to the um. Planning Commission thing at. Holy Cross. Last year. Um, sat in on a class about that, and it's definitely. Something that we need to think about as a community. Um, you know, do we restrict short term rentals? Where rentals are so rare in town anyway.
What, what, we have a ton of rentals. What do you, are you suggesting?
Well, besides the apartments.
Okay.
I I got, yeah. Um.
I mean, is it?
I I think of that kind of as 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 its own thing.
As Eloise will testify, there's a a lot of rentals that fly under the radar that, you know. Are are well beyond the scope of anything that's in our bylaw. I mean, the the number of apartments that are in single family. Formerly single family houses that aren't owned or occupied, you know, with four, four apartment units. formerly single-family houses that aren't owned or occupied, you know, with four, four apartment units that, you know, have materialized over the last twenty years that, you know, don't have anything to do with approval through the zoning process and, you know, it's a lot of apartments.
Yeah.
But they'll, they'll come out and vote November fifth.
Good.
Eloise knows who they are.
Right, Eloise knows where the bodies are, you kidding? Yeah.
Well, that, this has been helpful, right? I think we've, we've, uh, we've established some parameters and some objectives here. And we're, we're timely, I mean, we, we've got the opportunity to work on this certainly, so.
Wonder what happens between February second and May, when the town meeting is.
Well, there's a special town meeting December ninth. So if you needed anything immediate to deal with the February, uh, date.
When's that one?
October twenty-eighth.
Twenty days.
Yeah, I, my sense
Hearing and
Yeah, my, my, my sense in conversations with Jane was that, um, you know, establishing some guidelines for a Maytown meeting probably would be fine, that the world would not come to an end if we didn't accomplish something by then, so.
Right.
I'm happy doing this deliberately.
Well, Mr. Jim, I don't
Kristen's got her hair, Kristen has her hand up.
Oh, sorry, okay, Kristen, sorry. I'm looking at Eloise.
Sorry.
I, i- if I may make a recommendation, I, I think Maytown meeting would make more sense in, in agreeing with Tim. I actually happened to coincidentally attend the MARPA, um, conference today, which is the Mass Association of Regional Planning Commissions. And they stated, the Lieutenant Governor was there and, uh, several of the cabinet members from the, from Governor Healy's office, several secretaries. They said there is going to be a lot more information forthcoming in terms of even sample ordinances, sample bylaws. Um, and even though the February second date is obviously looming, um, they have received a lot of comments that there is a lack of clarity and they recognize that. And so there's going to be a significant amount of information forthcoming, um, according to them. Now, they didn't give dates associated with that, but, you know, I think just before we all beat our heads against the wall, it may make sense to just wait and see what else comes, you know, comes out. Um, but I think it's very helpful to know where the differences lie between the state requirements and Berlin's requirement. And, and I thank you, Jay, because that was actually really helpful for me for, to learn and understand as well.
Jay likes his charts. We like Jay's charts too, I didn't mean to imply that we didn't, they're always helpful.
Well, we, we gotta keep adding to it, so every time you run across something, especially Kristen and, and Jane, that's, uh, not on the chart but needs to be, we get on the list and we can talk about it each one of our upcoming meetings and maybe get to something we can put in writing and get voted in in May.
Definitely.
Good. Should we, uh, segue into another chart that was developed? We're postponed until the next meeting? Uh, no, I think we want to at least go over the highlights. I think it's timely and we have some members that are, uh, from other boards that may get, uh, something out of it as well. Can you share your screen, Carolyn?
Oh, yeah, which one?
You, you did a chart for the, um, Solomon, Solomon Pond.
Yeah, the, yes, yes, I can, let me.
Please.
I, I was unprepared, hold on.
Oh.
Let me find it, um. I actually did mine today at work and then emailed it to myself.
Hope your boss isn't watching this meeting.
Yeah, yeah, there's a chance of that. So I'm gonna open mine, just because I have that easily accessible.
Is that different than or amended from what you sent us?
It just, it just has like, it has my answers to the like, yes, no, maybe, yeah. Um, but they are just mine. Share screen.
Let me, can I preface this a little bit with some histories that Jane is aware of?
Oh, yeah.
The Metropolitan Planning Commission was engaged by the city of Marlborough to do an evaluation of Donald Lynch Boulevard back in twenty twenty-one. And they generated, um, a multi-page report for the whole Donald Lynch Boulevard, um, part of which includes this overlay that's Solomon Pond Mall. And in that report, you know, three years ago now, um, they generated this chart, um, which PEG has taken and, and, uh, reduced down to just the uses that Marlborough is currently willing to permit. So in the initial report, there's a number of uses that, that the report was not recommending to be included in the use chart for the, for that district, that Donald Lynch Boulevard. Um, and then the, the town of Berlin, the planning board said in the, um, Physical Development Committee, I know Peter Hoffman was involved with discussions with Liz Kelly at the mall, who was the manager. Um, and, and in the course of those conversations, we were introduced to a firm that was assisting the, the management team at the mall to try to develop, um, an idea of, of what the two towns would be interested in in regard to modifications to what was at that point included in the, in the, the total zone. Um, in Berlin's case, we were just specifically interested in the overlay. Um, and we worked with that firm for a little bit and we had a, a, a meeting with a bunch of people from the West Coast and a big Zoom call, and then they were dismissed.
Were dismissed.
And then time passed and a new gentleman, Matt Bader, was hired. And I know Kristen was involved in conversations with Matt and Liz. In the city of Marlborough, the new mayor entered the scene along with Meredith Harris, the, um, Economic Development Coordinator or whatever. And so that conversation began to proceed and that's when we got involved with some lawyers that were reflecting on whether the overlay was in fact, um, in effect in Marlborough. So that's, that's why we keep raising that question. And now Matt Bader's been dismissed. Um, and I know Kristen and, and Peg met with the mayor and Liz and, um, Meredith a couple of weeks ago. And I, it, it might be helpful to get them to sort of update us on that conversation, just so we understand where Marlborough is feeling the, the crunch to try to react to some of the changes that are happening at the mall. Um, because I think that would be beneficial, because that's a conversation that's fairly recent.
Um, I mean, I can go first. Um, it was a good opportunity to meet the mayor, it's the first time that I had met with him. Meredith and I had been chatting back and forth and emailing and I had, I'd been in touch with Liz for years and trying to help promote some of the ideas and events that she had going on on Thursday afternoons, uh, and early evenings. I left with the impression that Meredith and the mayor and Liz were more than willing to sit down with us and talk to us and kind of stop kicking the can down the road, but actually sit down and get something done. Um, you know, and I had concerns, I said, how is the small town of Berlin really going to play with the big city of Marlborough? And the mayor multiple times just reassured Kristen and I that he wanted to work together. And that's where I came up with this, that I was just hoping to get an idea from select board members and planning members, just to say, is there any type of agreement that we can come to as two boards to say, hey, eighty percent of us want this item, sixty percent want this item, we're all in agreement, absolutely not. So I don't know if that would help to drive some of the discussions about what we're looking for, the business to go in there, what we're looking for, um, you know, the overlay districts to do. So I was trying to work it from this side, just to get a sense of, hey, since the mall is being sold and a developer, you know, is going to be sniffing around to do this, wouldn't it be nice if there could be some proposal or some ideas on the table to say, you know, uh, Berlin representatively is looking for, you know, wink and blink and a nod to go down.
Right, and, and kind of when Peg mentioned that she had put this together, um, I was reminded of when we were going over the sign bylaw, the LED sign bylaw, and Jay kind of put together a list of all of the things and we took each item kind of and said, yes, no, maybe, and then kind of whittled it down to the things that were, that, that needed conversation and the things that were hard no's and easy yeses. Were, we didn't really have to talk about those anymore, so that's why I shared it with everybody. Um, because I think it's a good place to start.
If I could add
And I found the blank one, so I didn't, didn't have to share mine.
If, if the chair permits, if I could add just a, a bit to echo what Peg said. Um, there were a couple of things that I took out of that meeting. Um, one is that there has certainly been a change in administration, not just in the fact that there is a new mayor, um, but there feels like it's a very different approach. Um, and that the new mayor is coming from a far more regional collaborative perspective. I can tell you that in the first year and a half I was here, I did not once speak to the previous administration in Marlborough. And, um, within two weeks of this mayor taking office, he had reached out to our office and asked if we could meet up at the annual MMA conference. Um, really wanted to discuss issues, particularly the Solomon Pond Mall. That's how I initially met the mayor, um, because he had reached out immediately. And it really felt like a change, um, to me. And we are also discussing some other matters, including regional dispatch. Um, and, uh, you know, other, other, you know, intermunicipal things that we're dealing with with regard to public safety. Um, but one of the things they really said to us was, we are not trying to tell you by any means what to do. We want to know what works for Berlin and what doesn't work for Berlin based off of the new zoning that they approved for the Donald Lynch Boulevard, um, corridor, uh, zoning plan. So I don't know if there's a way to focus on those zoning uses and not focus as much on the overlay itself. I understand that there is historical importance to the overlay, but I think right now, given the fact that Marlborough has passed this new zoning and the, the mall is going on the market from the receiver, uh, time is a, is a bit of the essence in terms of determining if we can be on the same page or where we can be on the same page, because what they said to us is a developer who comes in, you know, i- is going to be less attracted if, you know, we're kind of not moving and not making changes and there's sort of uncertainty as to what half of the mall can be used for and what the other half can be used for. Um, and, you know, there are quote unquote bottom feeder developers that do things like what they did at Whitney Fields and Lemonster, where they just break things up and it's, it's destructive and not necessarily productive for the city and the taxpayers. And I, I think, you know, if I could speak for, for Peg and for a minute, I, I think the interest perhaps from the board, um, is just making sure that this affects all of our taxpayers, because the mall is such a huge part of our revenues. And the devaluation of the mall resulted in an ATB case that went down millions and millions and millions of dollars in valuation, which took a huge hit on our residential side of taxes. So I really think our interest is obviously not to tell the planning board what to do with regard to the zoning, but to try to see where we can help to move the effort forward. Um, so that we don't have to look to things like potentially a single tax rate, where our assessor is saying perhaps in FY twenty-seven, we may be talking about a single tax rate because commercial revenues are so poor right now. It may flip to where it makes more sense to do a single tax rate and that has a more positive impact on the residents. Um, but, you know, the last thing, I know there was some points of potential contention about our, you know, housing production and what Marlborough might want in terms of that. And they made it very clear that they are not looking to build an extensive amount of housing up there, because frankly, they don't have the public safety capacity either. Um, so I think we may be aligned in a lot of ways, more than we are different. But they said, we get that there are things that will not work for Berlin. They just want to know what they are, so we can all be on the same page. So when a developer comes, you can say, yeah, you know, we've done this updated zoning on Marlborough's side. Berlin's kind of working on making some changes on their end, they're looking to Maytown meeting. And it just makes us look like we are aligned and moving in the same direction, so that way we can be attractive to developers.
So, yeah, I, I think it would be easy for us and, and I don't think it's a hard exercise to go through this list, because I think there's probably half a dozen things in here that are red flags and then the majority are things that we'd all say, fine. But it, it still is very, very important for us to have an understanding at some point. And I don't want to get, you know, in, into a, a contest with Marlborough about this, but when we met with Meredith and the mayor initially, um, the suggestion was that, you know, we've done the heavy lifting, we've created this list. You know, i- if you would just take it and agree that the majority of these items are things that you would accept, we're fine. And then we threw back the question, do you believe that the mall portion that's in Marlborough would have to comply with what Berlin would be willing to agree to? Um, I don't think that the suggestion was there that they would, would comply with us on their side. That if, if we were reluctant, for instance, to say fast food restaurants are going to be allowed on the Berlin portion of the property, um, it wouldn't necessarily fly that they would, would agree to that. Um, and they've said warehousing, for instance, but, you know, is that Amazon warehousing? You know, what are we talking about? And I think that would be a red flag for us, for instance. And the apartment, the multifamily dwelling issue, whenever we talked to Bader or proponents earlier on, the suggestion was still, and the planning board met with Bader and he explained to us that anybody that would look at a, a residential component at this site would be probably looking for three or four hundred units. And we said that, that, that just wouldn't fly. Now, you're suggesting that Marlborough would probably be in agreement with that, which probably means that the likelihood of there being a, a residential component on this site is, is nil. Um, based on what they explained to us. And that's important for us to understand. If Marlborough wasn't able to handle the, the wastewater and the water demands, then, uh, you know, it's, we don't need to explore the residential component, we wouldn't be willing to agree to more than, you know, ma- maybe no more than even a hundred, you know, I don't, I'd, I'd be surprised what we could get through town meeting.
I mean, Meredith, go ahead, sorry.
I was just gonna say, the number that was thrown out was like no more than one fifty, so we're not really that far off. I don't know if maybe that was the malls idea, mall management idea, but the number by, given by the city um, was quite different. And I'm sorry, Peg, I didn't mean to jump in on you.
No, no, it's, it's fine, I mean, we're on the same page. I mean, Meredith almost seemed to totally balk at, at the thought of hundreds of housing units going up. Uh, she mentioned that Marlborough is now on the search for more land because they need a new fire station. Um, you know, she talked about the impact to public safety, she talked about the impact to their schools. So I didn't walk away from that meeting thinking, oh my God, there's going to be a bazillion houses down there. She had talked about, you know, the, the folks at the rink continually go to Marlborough and say, we need places to stay, we need places to eat. You know, families are coming from far and wide. Uh, you know, the mayor and I were talking and I said that I had probably Uh, you know, the mayor and I were talking and I said that I had probably visited every microbrewery in Marlboro and Meredith had overheard the conversation and was telling us that when they were putting in their breweries, they had sent out like a, a one-page US-wide uh, for breweries to come and they turned away more than they could possibly ever find space for, uh, you know, because she mentioned that what they look at is a residential component, a retail component and an entertainment component. So if you look at those three items and you look at several of these on the list, then Tim, to your point, there's going to be some that are going to be like, nope, don't want a laundromat, but boy, would I love to have a brewery in here. Boy, would I love to have some outdoor activities. Nope, I don't want a bank, you know, back there. Thank you very much. So that's kind of what I was hoping that both boards could take a look at this and do it in an open session, do it by yourself, have someone calculate it, whatever you do, so that you're not open, violating open, any open meeting law. But then we take this back to the Meredith, we take back to the mayor, we take it back to Liz and whoever else wants to come to the party and say, here's what we're thinking. Now what? Where do we go?
Yeah, that's encouraging, I think.
Yeah. So, you know, maybe it'd be between now and the next meeting, everybody fills this out and then at the next meeting, we tally it all up. So we do it in open meeting. Um, and and then be able to hand that in uh, to you guys, to, to, to somebody and
Mm-hmm.
Um, and say, okay, here, here we are. You know, there were definitely things on here that I didn't even understand what they were. There were a couple of, there were a couple of things I just put like an X in the maybe column with a question mark or the yes with a question mark. I'm like, maybe because this might be okay, but I don't really know what this is. Um, you know, like private clubs. Right? Is that a boys and girls club or is that like a gentleman's club? What does that mean? Yeah. Um, you know, so like, yeah, so there were several, several thi- and several things were easy to say yes or no too, but um, so, but I, I went through this today um, to do my homework. And I found that most of the stuff was fairly agreeable. Um, there doesn't see, you know, I mean, we can start with a maybe in the multifamily dwelling column and then everything else is pretty much either do you want this business here or or not? You know, it was kind of pretty yes or no.
Mm-hmm.
It, it was amusing to note that where marijuana now shows up for the entirety of Donald Lynch Boulevard and our effort to have something at Bannadore was completely knocked down by Marlboro's unwillingness to let us um, drive through Marlboro to get to it, so.
Yeah.
And we, we forecasted that. We suggested that it wouldn't be long before Marlboro would probably modify their bylaws so that they could allow it on Donald Lynch.
Right. So they have it as a special permit.
Yeah.
So, so Peg, just to make sure that I'm clear, all of this column, the propose, this came directly out of that report.
Absolutely. Uh, it was somewhere in there and I I tried to turn it into a Word document and it just got really ugly and long and nasty. So I just painfully sat there and cut paste, cut paste. So yeah, this comes out of their hundred and sixteen-page PD, PDF and you'll notice that I hid lines. I hid the ones that said proposed overlay, no. So, you know, I don't want anyone to think, oh, look at that, she left out, insert item here. No, I hid item like between twenty-nine and thirty-four. You'll see that numerically, obviously, there's some that are missing there. There are rows that are hidden because they were a no. So if they're a no and they're not allowed, why bother? Why bother to talk about them?
Right. So there are no currently and a no for Marlboro.
Correct.
Yeah.
And what are the
So they're hidden.
Do the different colors represent?
Tom, it, it's in the, it's in the guide somewhere. I uh, looked it up last Monday or so when we talked about it and it's very early in the document. So the color coding does exist. So it's, it's easy to find out what a yellow Y versus a yellow um, special.
Came from the document. It wasn't something that you had developed. Okay.
Nope, nope, came right out. It was a direct lift out of that hundred and sixteen-page PDF.
Yeah, now, and and I, we've sent that around before, but I'll send that around again to everybody so you can dig into the, the fuller document if you want, because it does talk about um, some other recommendations in terms of lot size and you know, it, it, the, the questions still remain, does Marlboro plan on modifying the underlying zoning o- on that whole mall overlay to accommodate uses that would use smaller lot sizes and, you know, there's a, we, we, we have to explore a bunch of stuff.
But at least this is a start.
Sorry, I was just gonna say to the, that point, if I may, um, one of the things that they kept saying over and over and over again is how can we help?
Mm-hmm.
Can we come to a meeting? Can we answer questions? Uh, you know, can we provide you with information? You know, when Peg talked about the mix of residential entertainment and retail, residential could be housing, uh, hotel rather, and they, they talked about the Apex um, complex that they have over in Marlboro.
Over and over.
Um, oh, all the time, yeah. And so, I mean, I, I think there's a genuine willingness there. It's, it's just all I wanted to express.
Well, and as long as Jay gets pickleball, I think it'll fly.
Well, we gotta be sensitive too, because we have hotel spaces at Solomon, I mean, at the Rotary that we don't want to cannibalize to put a, you know, uh, uh, and maybe there's enough room for both to exist because of the complex that's up there, but uh, the hockey complex that's up there, but I, you know, I, we just got to be careful that we don't poison the well from other, you know, uh, tax
Mm-hmm.
uh, entities that we, we, we count on.
Sure. And they have a Marriott right there.
Yeah, right across the street.
Yeah. Um, they, I just keep hearing that the, over and over and over again, there's not enough room, especially with the migrant housing crisis that we've been having. And one of the reasons we haven't had that issue in Berlin is that not only are the Homewood Suites a bit more expensive, but they run about ninety-five percent occupied um, for most of the year. And so I don't know that it would really compete necessarily. Um, people are going well outside of our area apparently to find hotels for the rink.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yep. Um, Peg, just one more question. So I know you lifted this right out, but do you know what the numbers that are in parentheses annotate?
There's foot, uh, footnotes throughout the document, Carolyn. So on some of those, you definitely have to go back and like you, I put some of that as a huh, I think I need some more information on it. Uh, for me, I just went through and honestly, it was just like a blink reaction. Yes, no, maybe, yes, no, maybe. And then go back and be like, oh, what does open air market?
Right? Like, are we talking a Sunday flea market or are we talking a farmer's market, you know, like, yeah.
Yep. But no, everything's in that document.
Okay.
Is the, is the LI for Berlin, is that the underlying zone or the um, overlay zone?
Oh, good question.
I don't know. That's a great question. I can go back through the document and see if I can find out, if I can put like a cheat sheet together um, that would talk about uh, residential accessory uses six. You know exactly what that means and what yellow SP means and what green, I guess, SP means, greenish gray.
Okay. So from between now and our next meeting, we'll um, we'll go through this and each one of us will get what we you know, we need to do and, and fill it out. And then um, do you want to schedule a joint meeting for our next meeting?
Um, see, why not? I mean, yeah, we can do the same. I mean, Kristen, uh, so our next meeting, I'm looking for a calendar. There's the twenty-first. So, I mean, there's only three of us. It's not gonna, four, including you. Uh, it's not going to take us that long individually to go down through the list and then we can just talk about it in the meeting and someone can tally two, one, zero, et cetera, and we'll just go down the, uh, go down the list.
Yep. And then our next meeting is the twenty-second.
All right. So we should um, set it up. Uh, seven forty-five, is that acceptable to you guys?
For me.
Okay. Okay. So Jay, when we set the agenda, could you set seven forty-five?
Yep.
For this, and I'd give ourselves a good forty-five minutes at least, maybe more.
Yeah, maybe more, yeah.
Did you have fun, Jane?
Is she still awake?
Oh, yeah. Yes, she is and she's smiling.
So, uh, yeah, I don't know. I might want to join you next time too for more of this discussion, seeing it'll be related to the zoning update, so. And I, I have experience at the Apex Center and I have more to add about hotels, but we will save that for another night.
All right.
That, it, there's just so much more demand than the ice rink.
Yeah.
That's good to know, actually, because Penny, you know, putting all our eggs in that basket.
Attractive to developers.
Yeah.
Even Worcester does not have enough hotel space and they have trouble getting some major events there because they can't provide enough hotel space for people there.
That's amazing.
Yeah, well, there was a period where Marlboro had more hotel space than Worcester. Um, I don't know if that's still, I mean, Marlboro has a lot of hotels.
They have the second highest amount of hotel rooms in the state.
Yeah, so.
Really?
Yep, after Boston.
Wow.
That's crazy. And that's a great revenue source for the town, you know, it doesn't impact the schools, it it brings people, the, they use the restaurants, they use, but our entertainment is around and it's um, yeah.
Would you like a motion, sir?
I would.
Well, before you, Tim, before your motion, can I skip ahead and, and can I officially close our meeting? Please? Um, so thank you for the opportunity to have a chat with you. It's always nice to work with you, looking forward to our next meeting. Uh, so I will officially close the select board at nine thirty-seven. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This has been good. I move that we adjourn.
Okay, there's our motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second and it's non-debatable, so I will ask the planning board members to vote to close the meeting. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Uh, Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries the animus. Thank you all.